Protocol.
Mr. Dujia.
Here.
Mr. Hall, Mr. Perron.
Here.
Mr. Woodruff.
Here.
Mr. Postor.
Here.
Mrs. Kingsley.
Here.
Mayor Brereton.
Here. Would you join me in rising for the flag, sir? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's exactly what I was feeling. I was feeling that.
Okay, folks, for those of you who don't know the protocol for tonight, we're going to conduct this much like we conduct a planning board meeting. I know most of you have probably never been to a planning board meeting, so let me go over some of the guidelines before we start. We will have three presenters tonight. Each presenter will present, and then we will open up questions from the council, and then we'll open up the questions from the audience. We ask you to keep your questions pertaining to their presentation at this time. And we'll go through all three presenters. At the end of the meeting, we'll then open it up for general questions and comments. Again, we ask you to be brief. We have a three-minute rule at council meetings. We may hear more lenient tonight, but just because you have a microphone in front of you doesn't mean you should break out and sing and dance or be prepared to make a speech. That's my job. Okay? So with that, a little comment. Each meeting will include an opportunity for public comments and questions. These meetings will not substantially go past 10:30. A three-ring binder will be provided to the town clerk and has-been with all the documents, a hard copy of documents listed on that evening's presentations. CDs will be available at the town clerk in the days following the meeting, which contain all the documents for the evening's presentation, and they'll be available to the public at no cost. We will also have this available at the library. Okay? And also, the video will be on, I believe, on TV 34 and 47 within a few days. Hopefully by Wednesday or Thursday it'll be on, so you can look at that. We've been asked, why aren't you giving us hard copies tonight? If we did, you can see that big black binder in front of Mr. Mistrata. We'd have to. And you can see the size of the audience. There'll be black binders lined all around here at a cost, a substantial cost, and we're not going to do that. So there's a list of the documents that will be discussed tonight here, and a list of the speakers. On that note, we will start. I'll turn it over to Mr. Mistrata.
Good evening. Mike Mistrata from Harvard Consultants.
You gotta turn on the mic.
The mic's on, Michael. Sorry?
If it's not on, Michael, you will know.
It's on. It's okay. Mike Mistrata from Harvard Consultants. It's on?
I can hear you.
Question is whether they can.
You need to speak louder.
Hear me? Mike?
No, it's...
Turn your mic, Mike. Technical difficulties.
Good evening. Better? I'll try and speak up loudly. My name is Mike Mistrata. I'm a professional planner from Harvard Consultants, and I want to just give you a little bit of a background and a history on the project. And before I start walking into the exhibits and so forth, I just want to reiterate what the mayor said tonight. It may not happen, it won't happen tonight, but we will make available to the public a CD, a computer disk. Every document that is discussed tonight, every document that you see up on the easel or that would be presented in any format will be made available to the township clerk's office, and you'll be able to pick up that document at township clerk's office at no cost. And if I have to make as many as I have, if I run out, I apologize. I'm sorry?
You're going to make CDs available at no cost.
CDs at no cost. And the reason why we didn't do the binder, it's just simply a printing cost. If you had the CD, you're able to open it up, take a look at it, and there might be... Well, tonight there's 15 documents on the CD. You may want two of them. Instead of... You could just pick and choose which one you want, make a print at your local printing company, or I can make the copy, and it would be charged through the clerk's office. So I just think it's an easier way to handle it, but you can get hard copies if anybody wants that. So what is the swap, and where did the idea originate from? The idea of the redevelopment of the municipal complex was first discussed in the master plan, not this master plan, but the previous master plan adopted by the township in July of 1999, which is 15 years ago. Originally, then, the idea of the swap was then later discussed at the township master plan adopted by the planning board in September of 2007. The master plan... What is the master plan? The master plan is a planning document that establishes the long-range, short-range goals and objectives for the municipality for 10-year periods. It used to be six, but they have since modified it to be 10 years now. And a master plan includes a number of policy statements and a vision that the municipality establishes for the community. And on the... There's a wide-ranging number of planning issues that can be discussed in your master plan, such as housing, land use, our typical ones, but it also gets into transportation, utilities, recreation, community facilities, historical conservation, economic, green, building, and environmental sustainability, among others. The master plan that was adopted in September of 2007 discussed the idea of redeveloping this municipal complex, and it discussed a swap of land with the private landowner to relocate the municipal complex elsewhere in the township. Now, at that time, back in 2007, it was an idea, and it was a goal. It was something that was discussed at a number of informal town hall meetings, just like we're having tonight. We had them on Saturday mornings, and we had them in a couple of them in the evenings. We didn't get as good of a turnout as we did tonight, but that's where this idea originated from. We took the concept that was originally 15 years ago in July of 1999. We had these informal meetings, and out of those town hall meetings, the swap was discussed, and it made it into the 2007 master plan. Now, I wrote the master plan in 2007, and I can assure you, at that time, I had no idea that the swap would be presented tonight with respect to the Church of Little Flower. I had no idea of that particular property at the time. But it's important to know that our master plan, on record right now, discusses it and provides that it would be a very important goal for the township to consider. The master plan also discusses in depth the redevelopment of an aging outdated municipal complex and portions of which are undeveloped, underutilized to their full potential, and it discussed private investment on this particular site. It does not get into specifics. It talks about it as a master plan should. It talks about it as a goal, as a vision, something that the town should establish as a policy. And then, the master plan is adopted by the planning board, and after it goes to the planning board, then the master plan goes up to the council level, mayor and council, where the master plan, the policies are then put into place. Since 2007, mayor and council have taken a number of the initiatives that were made part of that master plan, and they include a list of them. One of them is a downtown strategic revitalization map. What is that? When we had those town hall meetings, one of the biggest items that kept coming up over and over and over was, how does a township of Berkeley Heights revitalize its downtown? It became a critical component of all of the discussions. And when you read the master plan, it discusses... We went, we did a land use survey. Every single property in the downtown was evaluated, and we prepared a map that called for the revitalization of properties. Some that we called out for them to be demolished. One of them on that plan was the old dominoes of Pizza Hut, the one where you now have the Primrose School. That particular property was earmarked and said, listen, this is our downtown. We can't allow these properties to fall into such disrepair, and we need to promote the redevelopment of these properties. Excuse me. This map is on file with the township clerk. It's also on file with the township planning board, and it's also previously been submitted as part of the redevelopment study that we did when we did the redevelopment study of this item, so it's available for the public, and it could be provided again on a CD for everybody to take a look at. Other initiatives that came out of this master plan was a beautification committee. There's talk about it, but again, this whole idea of how do we clean up our downtown and how do we revitalize it? The town is, you know, everybody knows, it's a very high-ranking community. It's a beautiful community, great commercial base, great school systems, et cetera, but our downtown has lagged, to be polite, but it's basically, it's a series of 1960s, 1970s, and early 1980s strip malls. We have a whole lot of them. The irregular-shaped buildings, building setbacks, the look of the buildings, and so forth. All of this was discussed, and out of that came the beautification committee. The beautification committee was put in charge of creating new design standards of trying to revitalize and rehabilitate our downtown and make it more business-friendly, make it more pedestrian-friendly, have an established set of streetscape improvements, one type of ornamental light, street trees, and so forth. The whole focus of the plan is to revitalize our downtown. So we have a beautification committee. Then after that, council adopted... We have a set of design standards in our ordinance. It's known as Part 19, and it's buried in the back of our ordinance. And it's a very, very well-written document. It gets into the type of buildings and the type of look and the type of community that we want to establish, especially in our downtown, which are the HB2, the HB3, and the downtown development districts. And it gets into such items as the color of the roof shingles, and the color of the paint and the shutters, and the look of the pitch of the roof, and so forth. And it's a very well-written document, but it was buried in the back of our land use ordinance over the years, and it wasn't enforced. Council sought to it in 2010 to adopt an ordinance that now it's a checklist item that you can't get an application in front of either the zoning board or the planning board or for a use variance unless the developer hires an architect and they do a detailed analysis of their building, and we're holding them to a higher level. Excuse me. Council also adopted a sustainability ordinance. They also adopted a green design standards ordinance, and they also adopted a stormwater runoff management ordinance. All of this work came out of the 2007 master plan because the master plan called out how important these items were for the township in order to improve the community. So that brings us to the swap. What is it, more specifically? And it's discussed in the master plan, but it's discussed again in very general terms. There wasn't any specific use assigned to this piece of property should it swap, and there was no private landowner at that time that we were aware of where this property would, you know, could potentially move to. So what happens is, in around May of 2010, the Church of Little Flower approaches the council about the future use of what's called the Little Flower Campus. I call it the campus. That's not on Plainfield Avenue. It's the church campus that's located on Hamilton Avenue. And that, when they approached, that started a series of informal discussions between the church and the governing body, and ultimately, what came out of that was a memorandum of understanding, which you're going to hear from Mr. Sordillo next after I'm done. He's going to go into the details of what the memorandum of understanding is. Basically, what it is, is it's an agreement, preliminary agreement, between the township governing body and the Church of Little Flower that should this project move forward, the township would swap lands and obtain title to the campus on Hamilton Avenue, and this church would obtain title to the property right next to it, being the township library. Excuse me. Township library is located on Lot 26, Block 1301. It's a one-acre parcel adjacent to the existing church on Plainfield Avenue, and Hamilton Avenue campus is a 15-acre plus or minus property that the church has right now. I call it the campus. These properties, there's four exhibits up along, pointing to my left, up along the side of the building here. They're up on easels. There's four aerial exhibits. They're going to stay here. I'm not taking them home. They're staying here for the duration. So if you have any questions about the properties that are involved in any of tonight's presentations, those four exhibits will remain throughout the entire presentation, and if you need a hard copy, I can get you a hard copy. Again, everything is on a disk. You can pick up the disk free of no charge. You can take a look at all four of these exhibits that we have here if you have any questions. So the church approaches the township governing body. The government body turns around and starts to evaluate what the swap means to the community. We can't hold a series of public hearings until we have a significant amount of work that is done, and a significant amount of feasibility studies, drawings, and reports first have to be developed in order to answer the questions. Is this in the best interest of the township? What is the project going to look like? What would happen to the property that we're on now if we did swap? How much the whole thing is going to cost? What would the township do with the existing municipal complex? And ultimately, what's the impact on the taxpayers in the township? That's taken, excuse me, it's taken a while to get those answers for you in order to have tonight's meeting, but what we have done is we have scheduled a series of four town hall meetings. They're all informal. No votes going to be taken, and what it is is to show you the progress that we have made so far and to go over a series of documents that we've developed in order to answer those questions I just asked. I just want to be clear. None of these town hall meetings will any vote take place, no actions to take place by mayor or council. It's strictly informal. We call them workshop meetings. It's to gain input. We feel we have enough documents and have done enough work to present it to the public, but by no means is this a completed project or is anything etched in stone. I can assure you of that. Some of this stuff was changing at 4 o'clock today, so... But that's the nature of the business, but we feel that we have enough documents now to put it out there, present it to the public, and we've broken it down into four meetings because there's four distinct parcels of this project. The first one is the swap, and Mr. Sordillo will go into the memorandum of understanding tonight, followed by a presentation by Mr. Beiser, who is the appraiser, who put the value and took a look at the properties. And then, Mr. Sordillo will close also, and we'll go back to other items that are within the memorandum of understanding. The second meeting is strictly designated, which is a week from tonight, May 22, which is designed strictly for the library. It's to discuss part of this... The main part of this, one of the parts of this proposal is that the church would get the library. We would get their campus. Well, the next meeting is to discuss all of the needs of the church. What's wrong with the church building? Why can't it be renovated? What's the value put on the church and so forth? Anything that has to do with the library, excuse me, anything that has to do with the library will be discussed at the next meeting. We try to give them their own evening. The following meeting on the September 29th will be a presentation by an architectural staff that's going to go into details of the layouts, what the design would look like if the municipal complex moved over to the campus, what, you know, what the square footage is going to be, and that's going to get into detailed costs of everything. How much is it going to cost to build that? And there's going to be a comparison. What if we don't move? What if the entire municipal complex was just reconstructed on this site and there was no swap? What's the difference? Excuse me. So there's going to be an option one, there's going to be an option two. You're going to hear a lot of that, and what that is, is a detailed description of the costs, need study, square footage, and the programming of the two different options that the township has considered. Finally, on the fourth night, there would be, on the fourth evening, there would be a presentation of what goes here. That would be part of the redevelopment plan. What would it look like? What would it consist of? What's the density like? How many stories? How many units? What's going to go in here? Are there going to be co-units here? Is that going to be part of it? Everything has to do with the redevelopment plan that's in draft format for this municipal complex, and anticipated revenues would also be discussed, as well as, excuse me, a potential pilot if that's discussed, if that's something that comes forward. The RFQ process, the RFP process, who would develop it? How would you select a developer? How would you shortlist it at the end of the day? Would the public have a part of that selection also? And then, we would close with an anticipated construction schedule, project schedule, if all three, all the different components of the project move forward. So I think we've done, the township has done a good job of breaking it down into the four meetings, hitting the four major items, and you have an agenda tonight that was handed out. If you don't have one, I'm sure we could get you a copy. Again, it's on the disk. We'll be happy to get, if we run out of copies or anybody needs anything, it's not a problem. We will get it for you. But it's called Schedule of Public Hearings, and as you can see, over those nights, we're on September 15. Tonight, there's going to be three speakers, myself, Mr. Sordillo, and Mr. Beiser, and then follow that list of documents. There's 15 documents. All those 15 documents are on the disk, and all of those 15 documents pertain to the overall introduction of the project, a discussion of the memorandum of understanding between Little Flower and the township, the analysis of the appraisals, the existing deeds, and the impact of the reverter clause. And if we have time at the end of the night, we'll do a quick summary of the redevelopment study if time permits, which has already been adopted by the planning board and the council. Next night, on September 22, you can see there's going to be four presenters. That's primarily a discussion of the public library. Those documents are identified 16 through 21, so you know what to look for at the next meeting. And then on September 29, there's a number of presenters, and you can see the list of documents there, 22 through 37. We get into detailed architectures, cost estimates, programming, and so forth. And then finally, on October 6, we have the presentation of the draft redevelopment plan, potential impact of the redevelopment plan on the township tax rate, and so forth, like a discussion of those documents from 38 through 45. I just want to caution you that each meeting, the draft, you can barely see it. It came out a little light, but tonight's meetings are completed, and there's a binder that's being handed into the township clerk this evening, and the CDs are being made for tomorrow for distribution. But I just want to caution you that the list of documents that are identified for all of the other meetings are just draft, and you will get an updated agenda as each meeting goes forward because it's a very fluid situation, and we're refining some of the presentation as we move forward. So that's an introduction of the project and why we're here, and what I'm going to do now is introduce Mr. Sordillo, and he's going to discuss the memorandum of understanding with the Church of Little Flower and the township of Berkeley Heights.
Mr. Sordillo, before you start, does anybody need an agenda? If you could, please let us know. If there's not enough, we'll make more. We'd like to have everybody who wants one have a copy of the agenda and the program for the next few weeks. This way, we'll have more people coming.
You're going to turn that around? Yeah. Why don't you turn it around?
That's all right. Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'm going to just turn the...
No, that's fine.
...address the public as well as the council.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Joe Sordillo. I'm the Berkeley Heights Township attorney. I was asked to address the council, the mayor of the council, and the public this evening on a couple issues. One is the memorandum of understanding between the township and the Little Flower Church, and as well as the reverter clause that is currently in the deed that is covering the property, the Little Flower Church property. At this point, I'm just going to discuss the memorandum of understanding, and then I will come up a little bit later to discuss the reverter clause. Initially, to start out, before I actually get into the document itself, I just wanted to address what is the legal basis for the township from entering into this potential agreement. When the township was presented with this potential land swap from Little Flower Church, it looked into what mechanisms the township might be able to utilize to make this a possibility. The township is, as a municipality of the state of New Jersey, authorized to purchase and sell real property pursuant to the Local Land and Buildings Law. Under that law, the township has the authority to acquire property, sell property, and there's a unique provision in there for what has been called a land exchange. Under Section NJSA 4812-16, a municipality is authorized to exchange lands with a private entity. In doing so, the values must be equal or close to equalization in value, or their full and fair value, as the statute requires. When the properties aren't in actual equal value, it provides that additional monetary considerations must be exchanged to equal out the value. This is what the township is proceeding with under the land swap with, it's why it's called the land swap with the Little Flower Church. Now, the township does have the authority to purchase and sell property independently under the Local Lands and Buildings Law, but it's been focusing a lot of its due diligence and inquiry under the land exchange provision of the Act. Now, specifically, the statute addresses situations where land is valued, the land that is being granted from the township is valued less than the, or wait, let me say that again, where the value of the land being granted to the township is less than the amount the township is giving, and at that time, the township must exact additional consideration, cast considerations to equalize the value. The statute does not specifically address the inverse, but based upon case law and interpretations of the statute, it was found that this provision was enacted to protect municipalities, to make sure that they weren't getting less than the exchange from what is being offered. In this case, the municipality would be getting more. We'll get into the valuation of the properties next, but you will find that the municipality, the property of the municipality would be getting is worth a substantial amount more than what it would be giving up in the exchange. Therefore, under the general provisions of the statute, municipalities can purchase land. The municipality can then pay the additional monies to make it an equalized value, to be able to proceed under the Act. This is inherent under the township's ability to purchase the properties. Under case law, it has determined that this is, the statute's constructed very liberally and that when it's conferring the powers unto the municipality, and it does not, just because it's case law that has been affirmed by, that's been decided by the appellate division and affirmed by the New Jersey Supreme Court, has asserted, stated that while the provisions of the statute may not specifically address every possible land exchange, that does not specifically preclude the township or municipality from proceeding under the land exchange as long as the values are of equalization, equalized, and that it's in the best interest of the municipality. That being said, that is what the township has proceeded under the authority of moving forward with this land exchange. Side note, the township, the statute does also state that the value has to be certified by the township tax assessor. However, courts have recognized that such values can be and often are encouraged to be certified by professional appraisers, independent appraisers, and get additional valuation determinations. However, at the end of the day, the tax assessor can and will opine as to the value as well. That brings us to the memorandum of understanding with the Little Flower Church. When the church came to the municipality and started negotiations, in addition to just the values of the property, there was a lot of factors that needed to be discussed. There's a lot of moving parts. There was a lot of things that need to happen to make any land swap work. Such investigations would be feasibility. Does it make sense to the municipality? Does this new property fit to what the township's needs are? I don't think there's going to be much, though, I shouldn't say that, but I don't believe there'd be much argument that this facility is really outdated and needs a lot of work and it needs to be addressed, whether it's rebuilding this facility or finding a new facility. So when the township came into this, it decided it needed to find out, well, if this is going to be a possibility, will this new property meet our demands? is going to be a possibility, will this new property meet our demands? A second item to be discussed, and a very important one, is a library. The part of the property that was being requested is the township library property. That is because that is what is adjacent to the Little Flower Church facility. So they were looking to acquire the library property in exchange for the upper facility of the existing Little Flower Church property, to equal out what they, their needs versus what our needs would be. But, the township is not getting rid of the library, doesn't want to stop the library, doesn't want, it wants to continue that library, because it's a big, important part of this municipality. Therefore, provisions had to be addressed as to what happens to the library. Where will it go? What will happen? What happens during any transition period? Another major factor was financing. How is the municipality going to finance the construction, the purchase, and the exchange in general? And lastly, was what happens to the existing complex? Okay, we moved the, if we proceeded with the land swap, and we moved the municipal complex and the library to this new property, now we have this land here, what are we going to do with it? So, given all of these moving parts, there was so much to consider, the township wanted to proceed to investigate this, this possibility, but was nowhere in any way, shape, or form ready to enter a full contract, final contract for sale. So what was determined to be the best interest is to enter into a memorandum of understanding. That is basically, in all, in essence, an agreement to agree. It's, it sets forth the general terms of what the agreement would be, but just says, we will work in good faith to move toward, to get a final agreement that actually will be fully binding upon both parties. Therefore, at that time, the municipality and the Little Flower Church negotiated, discussed what would be in this memorandum of understanding. Well, the township knew it, need to keep a number of contingencies in there, so that it would be protected to cover those items I identified, all those major components, major moving parts. And the library, and Little Flower had some issues that they wanted to make sure they were protected in moving forward. So, what we came about was drafting a memorandum of understanding that essentially just set forth contingencies. It says, we will agree to proceed with this land swap, provided that all of these items fall into place, and at that time, we will agree, it was, we had finished through our appraisal process and determined the value of the property, and said, we would agree that this would be, this is the value of your property, this is the value of the library property, and the difference would be the price we paid at the exchange. Initially, going through the contingencies, there were a number of contingencies on behalf of the municipality. One of those is what is listed on the memorandum of understanding is 1A. That is, the township's final adoption of the redevelopment plan and the sale of existing township municipal complex pursuant to the redevelopment, excuse me, the redevelopment plan. This is, in essence, actually is two contingencies. One is that the township realized, what are we going to do with this existing property? Well, first off, we should fall, proceed under the redevelopment laws. That way, whether we're going to develop it as residential, commercial, no matter what it is, we have the flexibility, we can work with developers. That will yield the greatest result for the municipality, and have the most control, and yet flexibility, on behalf of the municipality. So we need to finalize a redevelopment plan, so that we know what we're going to do with this, this property, if we do proceed with the land sale, the land swap. Second is the sale. If we are going to move, move, or proceed with the land swap and move into the Little Flower Church property, what, we need to make sure that we sell this property in connection with that redevelopment plan. And that way, we can recuperate some funds and have that go towards any potential new development. The second contingency, or third, as you might want to say, 1B, is that the township enter into a final agreement with the library regarding the terms of the land swap and the utilization of the statutory millage. Two, two points to make on this contingency is, one, once again, the township wants to protect the library and the library's presence during this land swap, if it goes forward. Because, once again, if the, if the land swap proceeds, they, the Little Flower Church would be taking the library property. So it's very important for the municipality that there's an agreement between the library and the municipality to discuss what happens during that transition period, make sure the library's on board with this, with this agreement. And lastly, what is done with the millage. Now, millage, a lot of people might not understand, know what that term means, that is the statutory tax that the municipality collects on behalf of the library. When the library was established, it was established by a referendum, and by doing so, the township authorized a special tax for the development and maintenance of a library. That tax is collected by the municipality as part of your property taxes, however, the municipality doesn't touch that. It goes straight to the library, similar to how the municipality collects the, the taxes for the Board of Education of the county. That tax goes to the library, and the library utilizes that for its purposes, buying books, staffing, whatever it may be. If there's any leftover money, there's a whole big formula that I'm not going to get into tonight, but a long story, ultimately, there's a formula that finds if there is any leftover money from that millage for many years, because it is a statutory amount. So it's not that that's fluctuated, it's not a budget session where you have, you can lower the taxes one year or raise the taxes another, it's, it's a statutory amount. So what the, the state has enacted is a statute that sets forth, if there's any leftover money that's not used, minus a certain amount the library has to keep for, for its savings purposes, then it gets returned to the municipality and gets utilized with the general fund. So it does actually end up helping your taxes in the long run, if there is any leftovers. But, the, the question here is, well, if there, if there's going to be a time period where there is no library building, and we find a temporary location of a library, and we find, you know, a virtual presence, and we, we come to an agreement on those terms, if the, the library's not utilizing all of its funds, the statute does allow a library to utilize it for certain capital improvements. So we wanted to come to an agreement with the library, that if there's some leftover, that we can use that towards this land swap, to once again, help burden the costs. The next contingency would be the, the financing. Ultimately, if this moves forward, there's going to be the, the amount of money the town has to raise for the purchase in the land swap, as well as for the, the improvements. While, we will hear, I believe, either the second or the third, probably, I think it's the third evening, how the municipality, the feasibility and how the new complex would work for the municipality or wouldn't. There is going to be improvements that have to be made, either way, or, if it proceeds, to the, to the Little Flower Church property, and we need to find a way to fund that. So, part of that contingency is then the adopt, final adoption of a bond ordinance, to be, to fund the purchase and development of the new municipal complex. The next contingency, 1D, is the satisfactory completion of all due diligence inspections of the Little Flower property. We've already started doing some of those, making sure there isn't anything hidden that we weren't aware of, that raises a red flag and says, hey, we don't want that property. It looked good, we thought it was great, but structurally, it's no longer, it's not feasible. It requires too many repairs that are not just modification repairs, but actual repairs to the structure. That is another contingency for the township to get out of this, this, this deal. And lastly, is the final resolution of all litigation and appeals. Throughout this process, whether it's the redevelopment, the land swap, bonding, there's, every municipal action is subject to litigation, subject to an appeal. So before the township can be bound to proceed in any land swap, if it decides to go that way, all such litigations have to be completed, so that way, the township isn't proceeding, expending funds where, where it's overturned and not allowed to proceed. Then, secondly, the Little Flower Church has some contingencies. Their first contingency is the receipt and final approval from the archdiocese. While they are, while the church is a private body, it has its own government, and it has to get its required approval to finally move forward with this, this land swap. Little Flower Church also has a contingency for the collection and receipt of sufficient funding to complete its development of the worship space at its 310 Plainfield Avenue property. In connection with this swap, the Little Flower Church also needs to do some improvements and development with its property and the library property, if it moves forward, and they need to make sure that they have enough funding on their end to proceed with this. And then additionally, they, lastly, they have a contingency for the satisfactory completion of all due diligence inspections of the library property. Similar to the township, they want to make sure that there's nothing majorly wrong with the library property when they move forward. That's very similar to any land, real estate transaction. So as you can see, there are a number of contingencies here. This memorandum of, granting, memorandum of understanding, once again, is just that. It's just a agreement that these are the general terms, these things have to come forth before we're ready to enter into a final agreement. And the, the agreement actually, the memorandum of our stand, understanding specifically states that. It does expire April 1st, 2015, unless a final contract is entered into or otherwise extended by the parties. Meaning, we start, you know, after these public hearings, if it looks like this swap needs to move forward, the township will be proceeding and starting those, the required steps to meet all of the contingencies, and start, and preparing itself to enter into a final contract. Now, lastly, the memorandum of understanding sets forth the appraisals and valuations of each property. Based upon the appraisals from, that was, from the township appraiser, value research group, which Mr. Beiser will address momentarily, and ADR appraisal company, which was the appraisal company for Little Flower Church, it was discussed, negotiated, and determined that the valuation for the Little Flower property was $4,331,200, $621.20. The value of the library property is $1,486,257. So ultimately, in the memorandum of understanding, it, by simple math and rounding, it was determined that the excess value, or the, the value needed to, to make the property valuations equal, was $2,845,000. And that is the, the value of the monetary exchange in the MOU. Once again, this is, even though this is, that, that value's set forth in the agreement, the parties still need to negotiate and enter into a final contract for sale, which actually will set forth the specific terms of the agreement. Once again, I can't be more clear that this is just an agreement to agree. There's a number of outs for the municipality, there's a number of contingencies that have to be met for the municipality to proceed, as well as for Little Flower. But we needed to move, we needed to have something in writing to start moving forward, to really know that both parties understood what the general terms were, what needed to get done before we can actually move forward and get this under contract. Now, I, I ended it with the, the monetary amount, because I know that's probably one of the biggest issues for this evening's discussion, and I would happily turn it over to Mr. Beiser to start discussing those, but, as mayor.
Before we turn it over to the next speaker, are there any questions for Mr. Sardillo from the council?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Woodruff.
Perhaps Mike can help us on this. You've discussed the millage, generally speaking, with the public. Can you give us an idea, Joe, as to what that equals, generally speaking, based upon our tax base, what the millage would be? You know that, Mike?
No, I don't. Actually, I don't. I, I apologize. I will know that number for next week's meeting on the library, but I don't have that number with me this evening.
Okay. And my understanding, Joe, is that the library is it-- The library is attempting to, to determine what their needs are during an interim period. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. There's, there's actually, we're currently discussing with the library right now, to enter into a similar type agreement, I mean, memorandum of understanding with the library, to set forth those general terms between the township and the library, as to what their needs would be during, if this proceeded in any transition period.
Okay, so whatever needs equal costs, then subtracting that from the millage would be the monies that they may be able to contribute to assist in this whole process. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, there are some statutorily deductions that they have to make, and there's some limitations, but in general terms, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Sardillo from the council? And I'll open up to the gen-- Okay, you're not the council, but I'm going to get to you. Now, we'll open up to the general, to the general public. If you want to speak, you can walk around, get in the queue, and microphone, name, address, and, and that's it, name and address. So come on up, don't be shy. When the line ends, Mr. Benacci, the floor's yours.
John Benacci, my question for Mr. Sardillo. I'm not sure I heard you say, in this land exchange law, is there any provision at some time during this process for a vote, a hard vote, like a referendum at the polls?
There is nothing in the law that's, in the land use law that specifically addresses the referendum. Under general law, under the Home Rule Act, there is, and under the mayor, council, administrator form of government under the Faulkner Act, there are provisions for challenging municipal ordinances by referendum. There has to be a petition, there's a procedure, there's a certain number of signatures under petition to bring it to a referendum to challenge the ordinance, but specifically, under this statute, there, under the land use law, there isn't. I mean, not the, excuse me, the local lands and buildings--
Would there be an ordinance, then?
Yes, there would have to be, any, I apologize, any, any action to authorize the land swap has to be by ordinance, so the ordinance then would be, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Benacci. Let's not be shy, folks. Yep, come on up this way. State your name, three minutes, thereabouts.
My name is Sally Haggerty, and I live on Snyder Avenue, and I'm a little confused with the millions of dollars that were discussed, perhaps, just go rounding the figures out. You said Little Flower, $4 million something. I didn't quite understand all this. And $1 million for the library. And then, the agreement to agree with all of this that's going on, what is the offer to Little Flower for their land?
That'd be a $2,800--
That the town is giving, $2 million?
$2,845,000 would be the difference.
They assessed the land at $4 million?
The, the Little Flower property was valued at $4,331,000--
Well, just round it out, because--
Or $4.3 million.
So the town is going to pay Little Flower $2 million for the property?
Well, and exchange for the library property, which is valued at 1.1, rounded up, 1.5 million.
And, who is the town? Are we the town?
Yes, ma'am.
Would this all go into the taxes? How do we pay $2 million?
Well, that, that's the discussion of another, at another public hearing, of how it would be financed, but that, at this point, I'm just, I was just presenting what the number, to proceed with the land swap--
And what, what meeting will that be in?
The 29th.
Three.
29th, September 29th.
September 29th. Okay. That, that can't be in this discussion, because you're just laying out the plan.
Yes, we're trying, we tried to schedule--
Couldn't put a sentence in to cover the whole thing.
Yes, to make, to make it sense, so we can get to the point where everyone understands what those numbers mean, after discussing the baseline.
So, the town is offering the church $2 million?
2.8 million.
2.8 million.
2.8 million.
2.8, $3 million.
Right, round out.
Okay, okay. So, is this still in any court?
There are two litig-- Well, the, the land swap is subject to one litigation that's currently pending in the appellate division. There was, but it's, it was a challenge to bar or to, to stop the township from doing the due diligence that it's currently proceeding with, and it's been held, it was found by the trial court to be dismissed, and now it's pending at the appellate division.
And how long will that be in court, appellate?
It's tough to say with the appellate division. We did, the, the briefs were submitted this past spring, summer. The appellate division sometimes turns them around within months, sometimes it could be up to a year. It's, there's really no, no, really no way to tell. I know we, there was oral argument requested by the plaintiff in that litigation, but we haven't got heard whether that's going to be granted or not.
Okay. So September the 29th, you will discuss more of the finances--
Yeah.
--and the $2 million.
Yes.
And how we're going to pay for that with the town?
Yes, that will, all that breakdown--
We are the town.
Yes.
Susan McLaughlin? Okay, I just have a quickie.
Address.
Sorry?
Address.
11 Helen Y. What if, instead of doing the swap, I know we need to make some improvements with Town Hall?
We need to stick these questions to the speakers and their presentation. You can make comments about--
You can make comments about anything else at the end of the session, but for now, your questions have to be just to what Mr. Sardillo made reference to.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Thank you. What's the difference if we were not to do the swap and say renovate?
That's not, that's not what his presentation was about. He strictly had to ask questions about the memorandum of understanding and the swap. That question you could talk at the end of the evening.
Oh, okay, because I just wanted numbers. We were talking about numbers.
And that's the 29th?
That's the 29th.
We will discuss that at a later date.
All right, I came a little late. I apologize.
That's okay, no problem. Folks, we don't, we don't allow outbursts from the audience. If we get that, you'll be asked to leave. Everybody who comes to this mic, sometimes it's very difficult to come up to this microphone and speak. We give everybody the courtesy of speaking here without interruption. Oh, that's, I don't know who did it, I didn't see it.
Now we don't.
But now I do.
Now we don't.
I'm watching you. No, just remember, folks, it's difficult for some people. Not everybody can, so let's give them the courtesy, speak your mind, except for you. You can, go ahead, Mr. Varga.
I am honored to be treated as an exception.
I know you are.
So, Mr. Sardillo, when was the...
Name, address?
Tom Forreger, Dr. Forreger, 14 Dorset Road. Mr. Sardillo, when was the first time that you became aware that anybody on the council wanted, was interested in doing a land swap with Little Flower?
When I was aware?
Yes.
I guess it was January 2013 or 2014, no, 2013 maybe? Yeah, 2013.
Are you sure of that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, why were you doing legal research on the subject of land swaps then in August of 2012?
Tom, with all due respect, that has nothing to do with his testimony. We're not here for an inquisition. If you have some questions about his testimony, Dr. Varga, please ask that. If not, I'm going to ask you to take a seat. This is not an interrogation of when Joe knew about what. That will come, but not right now, just as on his presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, you didn't have the most interesting part of the meeting, apparently. I never do. That's okay. I wish I had the same thing. Mr. Mistrada? Does anybody have anything else to say, questions for Mr. Sardillo? Again, at the end, you can have your general comments and attack them, I mean, ask them questions later. Mr. Mistrada?
Thank you. Just for anybody who showed up late or just came in and didn't hear it in the beginning, everything that Mr. Sardillo testified to, the documents that he testified to, the memorandum of understanding, is available for the public, as well as all of the properties that we're talking about this evening and will be talking throughout all of the hearings are outlined on the four exhibits along the wall here, which, they've already been marked, so if you have your agenda with you, if you have any questions. Document number two shows all four of the sites that are being discussed, meaning the municipal complex, the Snyder Avenue complex, the lands that are owned by the town, the church of Little Flower campus, and church, and the library. All of those sites are shown on exhibit number two, which is also, will be on your computer disk. Document number three is the aerial photo to my left up here, it's marked, and that's of the municipal complex. Map number four is the aerial photo of, is a blow up of the church of Little Flower, the church of Little Flower campus, and the library. And then document number five is, you're going to hear a discussion on improvements of townshipland on Snyder Avenue for a proposed public works storage yard. Those maps, I just want to point it out for anybody who has any questions, they're going to remain here throughout the duration of all of the meetings. And again, all 15 of those documents listed on your agenda are available to you, part of the public record, hard copies being handed in tonight, and you can pick them up tomorrow on a computer disk.